Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our special meeting of the Larkspur City Council. It's Wednesday, December 13th, 5:30. Sasha, could I please get a roll call?
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Paulson?
Here.
Sorry.
It's okay. I will be that in about 30 minutes.
Yeah.
I'm here.
Great. And as you're able, let's rise and do our pledge of allegiance. Great, thank you. So that'll take us to our second item on the agenda, which is public comment. And as always, I'm sorry.
I think we might have had some signals crossed. So unfortunately, due to the complexities of the Brown Act, we had to call two special meetings, one right after the other. You have two agenda up there. The first one doesn't have some of the things you're doing right now. So and that was because we had some late items that we couldn't, by Brown Act rules, put into the main agenda. So we created a second special meeting that has two consent items that we circulated out to you. It's, and for the benefit of the public, before the end of the calendar year, we'd like our city investment policy to reflect state law, and there's some differences. And so we're asking you to approve those. And I'm sorry for the confusion.
Yeah, no problem. So, um, city manager, I'm seeing that the special meeting with the 4.1, 4.2 approvals says immediately following this meeting. So are we reverting that order?
I apologize, Mr. Mayor. We'll do it afterward. I'm the one who's mistaken.
I mean, we can chew gum and walk at the same time. So let's go back to the other one. Okay, so we were, we were on item number two then, which is public comment. And, uh, you know, as always, this is just for matters, not on the agenda. And, you know, tonight, as you can see for this special meeting, we're primarily doing a consent and the mayoral transition. And, uh, so if anybody, and then additionally, we are still restricting public comment to people here in the chambers. So we're happy to have people on Zoom. You can always submit letters. You can put comments in. But if there's anybody here in the chamber who'd like to comment on anything not on the agenda, please step up to the podium there and let us know your name and where you live. Okay. So if nobody wants to make a comment, then we'll move on to presentations and proclamations. That's number four. Uh, so presentation proclamations, I think, is number three.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
We're all getting ahead of ourselves.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank God, I only got two hours of sleep. Um, okay, so, uh, tonight is actually really a special night in so, so many ways. And I think this number three is one that deserves real attention. And, um, Kathy Orm has been our administrative services director for many years. And if anybody's seen the finance book, they'll know. And other towns would say, we're, you know, Larkspur is the envy of Marin as far as really well organized reporting. And she did double duty. She, you know, did the organizing of finances for the Central Marin Police. And we've just so valued her getting us through COVID, uh, you know, keeping our reserves and our general fund and all our accounts in order. And she'll be greatly, greatly missed. Um, so I have a proclamation here. I, I wanted to read and normally I skip over, you know, just reading a sentence or two, but I, I just feel for Kathy, we should read the whole thing. So I'll, I'll try not to drone. But, um, Kathy, we're gonna, we're gonna sing for she's a jolly good fellow. So just get it, get closer here. Yeah, please sit up there because we, we, yeah, this is. All right. So this is the proclamation of the city of Larkspur, uh, the city council of the city of Larkspur honoring administrative services director Kathy Orm upon her retirement. Whereas administrative services director Kathy announced that she'll retire at the end of this calendar year. And whereas Kathy joined the city on September 30th, 2013, that's a decade ago. For the next 10 years, she oversaw the modernization of the city's financial practices, policies and procedures. And whereas Kathy has always strived to save money for Larkspur, and her retirement may simply be a way for the perpetually cold administrative services director to lower the city's heating bill. Whereas Kathy should participate in the study to determine how long it takes a retired finance manager to stop reflectively answering the question, what's happening with the word audit? Whereas after once spending considerable time trying to reconcile an account that was off by 12 cents, Kathy called it quits when the balance remained off by five cents, thereby quantifying close enough for our Larkspur finance. Whereas employees learned quickly that swapping stories about challenging pets and companions and any sort of water cooler one-upmanship would come to end once Kathy relayed the latest trials and antics of her beloved horse Sandoval. Whereas a comparison of the city's general ledger on Kathy's first day and on her last shows a balance sheet of such improvement that it can only be described as the city treasures, mic drop. On behalf of the city council, I, Mayor Gabe Paulson, do proclaim our deepest appreciation and gratitude to Kathy Orm for her long and distinguished service to the Larkspur community and wish her well in the adventures and endeavors that await her in the next chapter of her life. So Kathy, we definitely want to. And I thought maybe if the city manager or any of the council members want to add a couple of comments, I just would like to say personally, I, I got to do the mind meld at the end. And I've often thought that, you know, we have a pretty easy job when we have really great staff members, staff members like yourself. So thank you. Thank you.
Well, um, it's a, it's very bittersweet for me. Kathy and I actually knew each other professionally and personally before she came to Larkspur. Um, and I was very flattered that she wanted to come here. You know, we've just done a lot together. It's been an amazing run. But I know you're going to have a great time in the next phase two. The hardest thing I ask of a finance director is to be my no person. So I can be the white knight that figures out how to get to some semblance of yes. And Kathy has taken up that challenge. It doesn't always make you the most popular person to serve in that role. And so I will also be immensely grateful that she's done that for me all these years.
I'm gonna miss you. And I miss coming in spontaneously and chatting and catching up on things with you. But I, I know you're off to bigger and better pastures with that galloping horse of yours. I just want to say, when you started here, I had, well, I got elected that year, 2013. And, uh, the, the involvement and, um, enhancement of excellence of our financial publications really has matured in a way that somebody like me, who's not a finance background, can really, um, well grasp and understand, and they're clear. And I think that's a great service to our public. And I frequently say to people, our budget and all of our finances are online. If you have an idea, if you want the city to spend some money on something, show me the money. And I say, you can go to the budget and it's very clear and it's very obvious where our money goes and just let us, and, and we'll talk about it. So thanks for that. I think it's really brought us into a much, I don't know that, I don't want to say the 20th century, but it's, it's brought us forward into really, um, being very accessible to our community. So thanks, Kathy.
And Kathy, I, everyone has already said everything, but I, I just want to say thank you because what our staff does is make our jobs easier. And what you have personally done has made our jobs unbelievably easy when we can just look at a well organized budget and know everything in a, in a chart and, and a couple of spreadsheets. It's just, it makes it easy. And I'm very grateful. So thank you. We'll, we'll miss you.
One more. Forty years ago, I went from labor to management of the company with about 50 employees under me. And my first meeting was with the head accountant for the company. And he said to me at the time, every decision is a financial decision. No matter what you think you're deciding, it has a financial implication of some kind or another. I immediately signed up for a four unit financial and managerial accounting class at City College of San Francisco, taught by the former chief accountant for Fireman's Fund, who hated me because I was labor, former labor. Particularly being a teamster, he did not like me. That was the hardest C I ever got. Most of my grades were A and Bs in college, but that, I was more proud of that C to learn the basics of accounting, both from the financial and managerial side. A few years later, when I was on the school board in Channarfell, I learned the complications of government financing, where you don't have the decision-making power. But boy, you sure have a lot of rules to governing how and when you can spend that money. Lash forward to being elected to this council, I was handed a very thick binder, which included a lot of financial information. So I went off to the Cal Cities Convention. And since I don't attend cocktail parties and functions like that, I thought I'd have plenty of time to go over it. One of the classes was on accounting for new council members. And I had your book with me. And immediately I drew a crowd. And people, including some members of city councils here in Marin County, who were saying, how did you get that thing? That tells you everything that's going on in your budget and in your city. I don't have access to that information. And people from other cities and counties were just stunned. And even the presenters at the conference were wondering what the heck was going on over at our table. And they came over and were very impressed with it. So your reach has gone far and wider than you might imagine. I know two of those council members have demanded more accountability and more information just because of that particular incident. So I wanted to thank you for that. It was with great relief when I did kind of grasp where we're at. And having, as you know, I've mentioned it before, I sit in on a couple of other city councils for business reasons. And I always am grateful to you when they get their financial stuff. Because we are far and away in such a fantastic position. And I know from everyone else, it's because of you. And so thank you very much.
Thank you, but I don't think I can take all the credit for the budget book. I mean, it says, really is a true effort of many of us on the staff. I mean, all of us that put it together. So, um, that is good to hear that it is clear, but can't take all the credit for that one. I do have to say thank you very much. I've enjoyed working with everybody here. And it's also, you make my job easier when you are fiscally, fiscally responsible and very conservative. So that helps, helps me. So again, I've had a lot of help behind me. So thank you for all the accolades, but you know, it always takes more than one to actually make it all work.
That's your mic drop.
Well, Kathy, we have our proclamation here. Maybe I can, it's not bad form. Hand this over to you. I don't know if we should have a COVID shield, but we got rid of that. Thank you, thank you. Great. So, um, with that, then we will go to item number four, which is our consent calendar. And tonight we have three items, our warrants, uh, the minutes from the last regular meeting and the purchasing policy. So, uh, would any member of the public wish to remove an item from the consent calendar for further discussion? Okay, seeing none, any of my fellow colleagues, council members? Okay, so I'll take a motion to pass the consent calendar.
Motion to pass the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to second. Sasha, could we get roll call, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Thank you. So that passes unanimously. And that takes us to the city manager's oral report.
I just have one item to comment on, uh, Mr. Mayor. For several years, and I know some of the members of the council participated in discussions with merchants and other representatives of business community about how other communities decorate for the holidays and, and the way we would do it if we could find a partnership. And I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, the Chamber of Commerce for grabbing that once they understood what other cities do and what I was talking about and, um, go out to some of our private property owners in the downtown and the merchants in the downtown. Uh, and I just think the lights that they, they have arranged as a partnership with us. That's what we always needed was a partner to make that happen. I think the downtown looks great and really want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for helping make that happen. Uh, and then as a housekeeping matter, um, in addition to consolidating your meetings into one December meeting, you were canceling your next regular scheduled meeting, which is January 3rd. It's awfully close to the new year. So we will not meet again until January 17.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of our city manager? No. Okay, so then let's go to item six, which is council members' oral reports and comments. Please, it wouldn't be tradition. They're, they're looking at you.
All right. Back on the sixth, there was the, uh, Channarfell Transit Center workshop. Essentially the new proposed, uh, what the central, uh, the transit center is going to look like. And it'll be fine, essentially. The only problem they really had was they were going to mix Uber, Lyft and taxis and the general public in one pickup and drop-off area, which I had to explain to them. Somebody will probably, that wouldn't have been a good idea. So anyway, on the seventh was the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority.
Uh, Councilmember Carol, could you possibly put the mic close? Just, just so I make sure everybody hears you. Thank you.
You didn't want to comment on it? Okay, essentially, um, it was about Ross wanting a 30-year lease from the authority on the ambulance site. And technically it can't be done. It can only be done in four-year increments. So a subcommittee was formed to, um, negotiate the matter and collect, um, try to work out an agreement that'll satisfy Ross's needs and the paramedic authority. They're eliminating the firehouse. And it actually is one of our busiest ambulances. And about half the time when they come out, they go right, or half the time they go left. So it is a vital resource. But there are technical issues. Paramedics are now collecting data on e-bike accidents as opposed to just regular bike accidents. So hopefully in a few months we'll have, start having some data on it. Quite a few people have expressed concerns about learning how serious of an issue we have. And last but not least, if we ever have issues with our city clerks having, uh, laryngitis like me, we discovered that Chief Martin is an excellent Zoom operator. Very talented. He ran a very tight meeting with a very diverse group of people. The second item was last night, Larkspur Planning Commission. Since the chief's here, I won't say how many people I saw in the room. I stopped counting at 45. But there were a few people outside the door. It was a pretty lively discussion. Uh, the, obviously the planning commission, as they commented, they're used to like one or two people outside of people involved in whatever properties they're looking at. But by and large, they ran a good meeting. There were a couple of people who tried to dominate. But it was handled in particular. They, they did a good job. But there were a lot of issues that came up, which I'll send the staff in an email. The main thing is that there had been a posting on Nextdoor that made it sound like it was the city of Larkspur that is imposing all this. And we really need to clarify that, that this is coming from the state. We have no choice, but more importantly, we're not the one developing individual properties. That's up to private property owners and who they work with. But that was a, a common misconception people had. The invitation to the people is technically very correct, but not very welcoming. That's how I will put it. And we'll, we'll go into that later. The one thing I do like, would like to see is uh, on our website, we have government and then elected officials. And I really think we should be including particularly Mr. Maguire's and Mr. Conley's emails on that website. Uh, because a lot of the comments that were brought up last night should have been directed to them. Is this state matter more than it is our purview? And I really wouldn't mind if they put Scott Wiener's personal email on that website, quite frankly. But that's it.
Okay, thank you. All right. And I, I'll reserve any public comment or public comment. I mean, council member report. So that concludes item number six and, uh, we have no public hearings. So we'll just move to our one business item, which is so. Okay. Give me five seconds to study what I should have read before. Okay, great. So, so that takes us to the, the mayoral transition. Which I guess it's, uh, maybe starting off with a presentation by new mayor to Gabe Paulson commemorating his term as mayor. Or is it?
I, I scribbled, so my apologies. This is another item where I look forward to the return of our city clerk. So, so first, Mayor Paulson, you have opportunity to make comments.
Okay.
Uh, reflections. And then, then you follow the balance of the script.
Okay, got it. All right. So, um, if you guys don't mind me, uh, reading off my cheat sheet. So, uh, mayor opens and conducts the meeting, uh, by making comments. And then the transition call for nomination for vice mayor, call for nomination of mayor, and then we'll move on from there. So I, I want to be brief. I think if, if there's one thing I learned, uh, being mayor is that I talk too much. I, I sometimes watched myself on Zoom and I just said, shut up. So, so let's see if I can be as strict with myself as I am with others when we have three or five minutes of public comment. But, but I did want to start off by saying that, that, um, this has really been one of the, you know, best years for me. It's, it's been an amazing privilege to, to serve and to serve with everybody here. And I kind of wanted to just in a couple of minutes summarize my gratitude and also summarize where I think we are, um, from, you know, 12 months ago. And the first place, you know, for gratitude, I, I, I think it's where we left off with Kathy. I think I have to thank staff. And I'll start with our city manager. And I, I just have to say anecdotally, I've said this before, uh, you know, city manager Schwartz allows me to meet with him every week at Tuesday at 12:30. And he's so regular and it's been one of the best ways for me to, uh, take his expertise. And he's really one of the respected city managers in the county Marin. And to, to learn from him and to make sure I come prepared so I can serve you better. So I, I want to thank you again and again, because this has not only gone on this year, this will probably go on next year. So if I did a count, it's 50 times five, which is 250, and therapy is about 200 an hour. So it's, it's a pretty big bill that he could be charging me. But the other thing I think, uh, you know, uh, city manager Schwartz did is he assembled an amazing team. I, I think he's humble, but all the other thank yous are to those people, but I have to thank him first for assembling such a great staff. And, and the city really benefits. And I think the four of us up here want the best for Larkspur. And in some sense, we're a glorified, you know, citizens oversight committee, but we really are lucky that we have gotten a team together and worked through some real challenges and really accomplished a few things. So thank you, Dan. Um, and Kathy, again, thank you. And, and I feel like in the paper, it was all about the roads, how we went from flunking to Ivy League. And, you know, there could be a subarticle about the finances. So, so thank you. Thank you for that. Um, and Elise, I saw her just step in here. And I would say, uh, you know, I've gotten to know Elise, having served on the Housing Element Committee for 12 months. And when she was in Piper Park, on her Saturday, trying to answer questions, and I thought to myself, the 200 people or whatever in the room, where were they when she was out there? I mean, we've been trying to communicate, but her, you know, uh, professionalism and friendliness, I, I talked now to many, many people. And, and it's really shows that, you know, we're in good hands and we're dealing with some very challenging. Housing is one of our most challenging issues right now. And I'm, I'm so pleased that, that you're, you're here and helping us. And Julian, uh, in the room, Julian, I've, I've gotten to work with you now through the library and over the years. And you've, you know, I, I think the first big thanks came when we got the Bonner Bridge done. And now you're on to your second marathon. And I, I'm just, you know, very happy. And I, I, you know, live near the, uh, the pump station in Heather Park. And I see your Public Works guys. And I chat with them and I get a feel for your department and the morale. And I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased that we have such an important department handled by such a capable person. So thank you for that. And Damon, I may not be here, but you know, I got to meet him at Ann's house with the library. And here we are moving into a new time. And, and the fact that, that, you know, he has the county experience and from all that I've seen, he seems like, oh, he'll be a wonderful director. And I, I know that there are many, many others. I also want to thank Shannon. You know, Shannon has, you know, kind of been the, you know, the double duty here with the kid. And I get that. And, and thank you so much for, you know, doing the things you do with such professionalism and such analytic ability and, and really appreciate it. And Chief Martin, I think you're back here. And I, I think of our accomplishments, you know, fire safety, flood safety, you know, these kinds of things. And, and you've come to voluntarily to our once a month Monday meetings countless times. And people in the community know when staff makes time for them. I think they feel it and, and the face of the city is friendlier. And I hope we get more results. So thank you for all your hard work and for all the staff. I know there are many, many others. And, you know, when I look at the lights in the park and other things, I feel like, you know, that's, that's where the gratitude, you know, really, really, uh, starts for me. And then I wanted to thank our council. And, you know, I wanted to start with, with, uh, you know, a council member, um, you know, Candell for just, you know, he's stepping up now. And, and I feel that it's been such a wonderful experience to, I think, the era of, you know, local control or, you know, making unilateral decisions. I think we're in an era of compromise now. And I feel I have a good partner who is courageous. We'll ask questions, even if people boo him. And we come to things that are reasonable. So, so I, I've learned a lot and I really appreciate all that you've done. Um, and Councilmember Carol, I think from the beginning, I, I felt, uh, both a little dread, like, oh my God, what bombs are going to be thrown at me? And a lot of gratitude that, that, you know, some of the voices that don't feel they have a seat at the table do. And you clearly do your homework. You clearly care. And you've clearly made a difference. So I'm, I'm immensely indebted to the time, the partnership. We've spent a lot of time together, sometimes too much time together. So thank you for that. And Councilmember Way, I would say is my, um, inspiration. I got on the council, I'll say quite honestly. Thank you for that. And Councilmember Way, I would say is my, um, inspiration. I got on the council, I'll say quite honestly, because of her, I started in the NRG groups, and. As you can see, we have a lot of turnover, we have a missing fifth body, and, you know, when things were starting to, you know, turn over, I said to. Councilmember Way, please stay, we need an adult in the room, and she agreed, probably for other reasons, but, but I'm so glad she's here, so. And, uh, and, and then the last thank you is just to constituents. I, I think people will say, you know, oh God, what a thankless job, and I think they're wrong. I've knocked on. Probably a thousand doors now, and maybe several hundred in Larkspur, and I think people are noticing, people are watching, and people do say thank you. They say the same thank you the way I did now, and I think. Even though we're volunteers, you know, we are kind of that little, you know, thread and lifeblood of democracy, which, when you read the national news, that's why I got into this. I mean, there's a place where things can still be reasonable, there can be the exercise of common sense, people can compromise. And, and I feel like even last night's meeting, I literally was in the back of this room with three central Marin police officers that were called in. And, and I thought to myself, wow, this is a lot of hot tempers, and I watched the planning commission really. Take what is normal in the political process, which is a lot of pent up emotion and, and frustration that, and, and work it, work it, and, and the statement they said is, we're all volunteers, we live here, we want the best, just like you. And, and I think the temperature came down, so, you know, thank you to the constituents, their patience through rent control, through the library, through everything else, so those are the thank yous. Uh, and just to take another minute, because I am getting wordy, um, what we've achieved, five things, I'll be brief. One is the library, we're going to get into that. I mean, that is a major milestone. I think that's a dialectic that, that, you know, has gone on, maybe a, a soap opera, and, and I'm so happy to see shovels will be in the ground. The second is housing. I think from yesterday's meeting and from what consumed so much of twenty twenty-three, housing is the can we've kicked down the road so long. And it's something we have to fix for the vitality of our county, for the vitality of our city, and I think we took, we had some courage. I think a lot of towns and cities look to us and say, not bad. So I think we got somewhere and a lot more to do. Fire and flood, again, with Chief Martin here, I mean, that we passed Measure G, that we're starting to address storm drains. We know the floods are coming, you know, nineteen eighty-two, two thousand and six, you know, the high water mark in San Anselmo is, it's there on, you know, this, the main square, we're going to get that again. And we are thinking ahead. I mean, that's why I'm in this business, that's what I think we need to do, is to prevent the problems before they become catastrophes. And I'm glad we're, we're taking some action and people are, are supporting us with the tax money and so forth. Uh, the fourth is, I think, just the morale, the attitude. Um, I look at the lights in Piper Park, I look at the lights on Magnolia, and I feel like in the darkest, wettest. Coldest time of year, I love the human invention of the holidays, and I feel that that's how we got through COVID. Councilmember Way was our mayor, you know, we all hung through this. I think we're starting to feel like life is, is somewhat getting back on its feet for our city. And for our businesses, and for all our members, kids in school starting to catch up. I, I really feel that was something with many, you know, sort of. Efforts on the side. And then last, I just hope that we got a good reputation, a reputation for good government in Larkspur. Um, I had forty city, you know, uh, office hall meetings, I opened the door here at two thirty, and I don't care if you liked me or didn't like me, if you're a renter or landlord, a biker or a driver. It didn't matter, a dog walker or someone who had kids and hated dog walkers, come in and let's talk, and, and I feel like that was my intention, and we carry that forward. We are here to serve. And I wanted the people to feel that. Nobody is above or special, and you don't need to, you know, have friends to know people, just come in at two thirty and we'll talk. And I feel the entire staff in the city has sort of given that, you know, that kind of, um, high level of service to the best of our ability. And the council staff made it easy, it's good to see a library, roads working, finances in order and so forth. Um, so the very last thing is my son, I was walking him from school, and he said to me, Papa, I figured it out, but tell me, are you the mayor of the planet? And I said, I'm sorry to disappoint you, A, it's the city of Larkspur, and two, it ends tonight, but. I'm so pleased to have gotten here and with all of you, and with that, I just want to give you a big thanks, and, um, I look forward to another year of working here. If they're brief, you know.
Gabe, the, I mean, this is public service, and you have gone above and beyond, uh, what I would ever have seen or expected. You lead with your heart, and you lead with your mind, and you lead with your intellect, and it's very obvious that you care. You take all the time. That you can to learn about a subject and to really delve into it, and you listen to people, and it's a remarkable skill, and I think. In the years I've served on this council, with ten, this has probably been the most, second most difficult year, at least in my book, with, um. The really emotional and passionate arguments we have heard on lots of different subject matter that are very, um, personal to a lot of people. And very important for us to hear, and as policymakers, we often will be challenged, uh, to. Take a position, and sometimes we take ones that are unpopular, but we have to, um, be trusted to have good leadership and to really be thoughtful about things, and I think you are exemplary at that. And then there have been times when my vice mayor and myself have looked across at each other, like. The two-minute public comment, which is now twenty-seven minutes of public comment, we would often sort of, he, he would give me an eye, like, make sure you get that timer going, not that we don't want to hear from people, but. As a, as a, as a memento. For. As a memento for your wonderful year of service, I want this to sit on your shelf. So that you will always be reminded. Of. How to keep time. And it says on the top. Heartfelt thanks for your time and dedication as Larkspur Mayor twenty twenty-three. And there's also a nice things to take your beautiful, lovely, patient, dedicated wife out to dinner.
All right, if I, uh, I know we're going out of order a little bit, um, but it makes sense probably for me to just make a couple of quick comments real quick. I, I try to learn from people, you know, from everybody, um, and I learned a lot from you as mayor. One of the things I learned is patience. I learned the importance of listening. Uh, and the importance of. Letting people voice their opinions. Uh, as full as they feel is appropriate. Um, because I think it has a lot of benefits, and, and I think we. Did a better job as a council because of that. So I know we hassle you a lot. Hit the button and let's move on. You know, at the end of the day, it did bring a lot of benefit to us, and, and I will hopefully. Take some of that patience with me, uh, next year, so thank you.
Two virgins that do not go together. Paulson and brief. I know. My grandchildren. Spotify tells you this time of year. How much you've time you've spent listening to what music? And the total amount you've spent on their site. If YouTube does that with city council meetings. I think we probably set a record. This last year. And the thing that I can hope for you. The most. Is they have more time to spend with your kids. That was something I always tried to be aware of. When we would have. Discussions outside of, uh. The council. Your kids are at a precious age. And it's important as the work we do here is. Put it on those of us who don't have as many kids. Otherwise, I'll just waste it on my grandchildren and spend more money on them. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so then, uh, I will call for a nomination for the vice mayor.
Nominate Catherine White.
I will second that motion.
Great, uh, Sasha, can we get a, a vote?
Councilmember Carol?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Councilmember, um, also the member Candell?
Yes.
Council, uh, mayor. As number eight?
Yes.
Great, and then I will, uh, call for nomination for mayor.
Uh, I would like to nominate, uh, Vice Mayor Scott Candell for mayor for the year twenty twenty-four.
I second.
Okay, great, Sasha will call.
Councilmember Carol?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Yes. Congratulations.
Okay, and now, uh, Sasha, if you don't mind, change the titles, uh, on the Zoom meeting, and.
I think probably the, Ms. O'Hare, I'll take care of that.
Oh, okay, okay, great, and, um. I think I need to move my seat or move this tag at least if we're going to finish the meeting. So why don't I? Just put this down? And, uh, I think, um, we just did a bunch of comments and more comments, so the Larkspur Volunteer Fire Foundation representatives are. Up in the audience, and they have a, a ritual routine here, which we would love to. Experience. A gavel?
Where, where's?
Is there a new gavel?
Might not be here, so we might have dropped the ball, we'll use that one tonight.
Dan really needs to have his city clerk back. Good evening, council members, uh, and audience, I'm Dennis Chilardi, representing the, uh. Larkspur Volunteer Fire Foundation, along with Mike McDermott. And it's been our pleasure for many decades to welcome the new mayor and to present. The gavel. Which will be appropriately inscrib- inscribed, uh, with. Years of service. And, um. I'm still recovering from a. Five-week cold in ear issues. Mike is going to make the presentation.
Well, thank you. Sticking with tradition and keeping it short and sweet, we want to pull up one of our favorite Uncle Skinny's comments that. Stand up to be seen. Speak up to be heard. And sit down to be popular. Congratulations. Are there any public comments? Okay, check that one off. New mayor, new mayor, make some comments, okay, um. Thank you. I am honored. And, uh, kind of humbled. And I look forward to. This coming year. I think we have some. Interesting things, some exciting things, some. Difficult things that we're going to deal with this year. Um, but I think we have a, uh, an amazing council that, uh. Is able to work through difficult issues. So I'm looking forward to those challenges, and. I think most importantly, I want to thank. The citizens of Larkspur, everybody. A- as, uh. You say Mayor Paulson. A- 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 as, uh, Councilmember Paulson has, uh, has stated, um, there are a lot of heated issues. But. I've been to a lot of other city council meetings in other jurisdictions. And people in Larkspur, as a general rule, are very respectful. Um, they can have difficult conversations. Uh, and I think we, we get to pretty good end results most of the time, and I just want to thank everybody for being so. Calm and reasonable and. Able to work through these difficult issues, because as a, as a city, that's what allows us to progress and to, to make the right decisions and to move forward, so. Thank you all for that. And, uh, I look forward to this year, and I am more briefed than. Councilmember Paulson, so that's it. All right, so at this point, I think we are between minis, we want to call the second half, the, the second special council meeting at this point?
No, so we scheduled a brief break so that. People could have opportunity to. Speak to both of you and congratulate you, and we have a few refreshments, and then we had told our consultants that we'd do the next part about six thirty, so.
Okay, and then, then we have the second.
We'll do that after everything else, yeah.
Got it, okay, let's take a break, till six thirty.
I go back. It's this one, special meeting, meeting.
I, I think.
Run eight points, he's, I think.
Okay.
I know, we gotta, he's trying to confuse everybody tonight.
Demoted.
Okay, eight point two, authorize the city manager to negotiate a build design contract with Alton Construction, Inc. For the Larkspur Library and Community Project, CIPs twenty-three dash one oh two, twenty-three dash one oh four, and twenty-three dash one oh five. Can we get a staff report, please?
Before I give the. Mic to Mr. Skinner. When I got hired, I had a list of infrastructure challenges, and I, I. This is a momentous day for me, because we've been trying to work our way through that list, and we've done some amazing things. Uh, but this is right up there, it's really exciting, so with that, I'm teeing it up for you, Julian, since. Um, who's really been the, my partner in crime to get a lot of that list banged out, so.
Hey, good evening, uh, my name is Julian Skinner, I'm the Public Works Director for the city of Larkspur, I'm happy to be here tonight for the next step. Uh, in building a new, uh, library in Larkspur, and today with me, um, I have Ignacio Ramirez from, uh, Kitchell, who have been. Uh, with us, uh, for the last year, uh, through this process, and they'll be with us, uh, till the end when we open the doors on the new facility. Okay, so we have, um, uh, one requested action of you tonight, which is we would. Uh, we'll be asking you to authorize the city manager to negotiate a design-build contract with Alton Construction, Inc. for the new library and community space. Um, in addition to that, we're going to present some information from the request for proposals and the request for qualifications process that we undertook. Uh, as well as share with you some of the budgetary numbers, as you recall, uh, we did allocate some funding. Uh, for the new la- library previously, and we have some options in here that bring along with them other funding, uh, choices, um, that we'll present tonight and we'll come back. Um, in the new year, um, when we finalize, um, a contract with Alton, we'll also ask you to, uh, consider budget amendments to, uh, fund portions of this project. I'm probably going to use a bunch of acronyms a bunch of times, so I thought I'd put them in here. Uh, very common ones that you'll hear throughout the presentation, I'll talk about RFQ and RFP a lot, those are the two processes. Uh, we went through, uh, to date, and RFQ is a request for qualifications. Um, so that's where, uh, we put out, uh, a scope, and then firms give us their statement of qualifications to tell us. How they would be one of the best firms to deliver what we're asking for, and then an RFP is a request for proposals, which is a little bit more formal, where they actually. Uh, in addition to telling us how they're qualified, they tell us how they would do that, that project. Um, and then, uh, DBE, uh, we're moving forward with a design-build contract, and so, uh, DBE, if you hear me refer to that. That is the design-build entity, which is a contractor, uh, teaming up with an architect, uh, to do the project together, so design-build. Um, as the name implies, is where you design and build the project altogether, so as you've seen all the times I've been here before, and we've awarded construction projects. We've used a typical, um, design bid-build process. Uh, where we hire somebody to design a project, they design it, and then we put it out for public bid, and then we hire a contractor in two separate processes. Uh, for this project, due to the fact that we have a grant that has a fixed dollar amount with it and a fixed timetable for completing the project. Uh, we determined that a, a design-build process would provide us with the best opportunity to complete the project for the best value and, and on time, so. complete the project for the best value and on time, so. That's why we're doing a design-build for for this project, and then TCF is the Commons Foundation who have provided over $5 million in funding to date for our new library. So a little history here, I did mention the TCF, so they've raised over $5 million in donations. We did receive two grants for the project, one was a little over $5 million from the state to build the new library, and it has a 100% match with it, so together, the $5 million from the TCF and the 5.2 from the State Library Grant are proposed for the library construction. We also received a $1 million state targeted grant for off-site library improvements, which could be the access road, could be the parking lot, just not the building itself, and so over the course of the last year, we did issue both an RFQ, followed by an RF, followed by an RFP. And it's a sequence, so we do the RFQ, and then we rank the responses to the RFQ. And then the top teams from the RFQ are then invited to respond to the RFP. We went through the RFP process, and as I'll describe as we go further, we scored the responses to the RFP and the scoring team has ranked Alton Construction as the DBE with the best value proposal, and Alton teamed up with Nolan Tam Architects for their proposal. Start with their request for qualifications, the table shows the information that we provided to the prospective DBEs, new library, 6,845 square feet. You've seen this odd number many times before, but it happens to be the exact square footage of library that's in this building, and that was a grant restriction was that we could not build a bigger library, so. The RFQ that went out stated we would be building a 6,845 square foot library. In addition to that, we've noted a community need for additional meeting space, and so in having a contract to build a library, we thought this was a good opportunity to maybe add some community space at some cost savings, since we would have a contractor on board building a library, so we've thrown some alternates into the proposal and the statement of qualifications for adding community space, two options here, we did a 1,650 square feet as a base, and then an alternate for another 450 square feet on top of that. And then we separated out site work, landscaping, parking lot, and that's mainly grant-driven because of what the certain different grants can pay for. And then I guess an acronym I didn't explain before, but FFE is Furniture Fixtures and Equipment, so. In building the new library in the community space, we'll need workstations, we'll need bookshelves, we'll need desks and chairs, and so the idea was to incorporate that into the bid, that can be done separately, but it's always good to have it out in the bid to start with and see where you get, and then you always have the opportunity to look for that elsewhere later too if you want, but for this purpose, we had it included in the package that we asked for the DBEs. So we received nine, nine statements of qualification for the RFQ. And we had a scoring team that scored each of those statements based on criteria that were published, so they knew that what they were gonna get scored on when they submitted, and we landed on three top firms to go to the next process, the RFP. In alphabetical order, it was Alton Construction who teamed up with Nolan Tam Architects, BNB Builders with RNTA Architecture, and then Bogart Construction who teamed up with Jason Architecture, so. As the top three, they were given the RFP document and asked to submit proposals responsive to that RFP. This is the scoring that was used for this RFP process, so this scoring metric was given to each of the DBEs as part of the RFP, so again, they knew what they were going to get scored on. And there was a scoring team much like there was for the RFQ process, and we're using what's called a best value design-build process. And so we're selecting, the idea is to select the design-build entity that provides the best value to the city for this project, and that's demonstrated by the highest score when you add up their individual scores for all of these items. So the RFP that went out included certain criteria, obviously, we told them we wanted the 6845 square foot library. The Kitchell team worked on the technical specifications, which says what the building needs to, what standards it needs to be built to, what the expectation is for the level of fit and finish in the building and things like that. And then we did it with a stipulated sum contract, which means we told the DBEs how much money the city had to build this project. And so their proposals come back to us and tell us what they can give us for the money that we have. Obviously, a more traditional that we do in our design bid build is we tell them what the project is and they all come in with their numbers, well, we don't want to get surprised a year down the road and have the numbers come in $5 million more than our budget, so. We tell them how much we have, and then they give us a proposal that says, here's what we can give you for your budget. And this is how the numbers break down based on those spaces, we had about 8.8 for the library, a million eight for the community space, and then we did, there was one item where we did say how much would this cost, and that was the additional community space, the 450 square feet, 1.6 for the site work, and then 500,000 for the FFNE, so. They had this number of 12.7 million in putting their proposals together. When we went through the proposals that we received, the team, we had five people on the team scoring, and we took everybody's scores and averaged them, and the result is what you see here, the very bottom line is the average of all those scores. Alton and Nolan Tam received an 83.45, this is out of 100. Bogart and Jason received an 80.65. And then BNB and RNTA were lower than that, down at 56. So as you can see, the numbers go back and forth a little bit between Alton and and Bogart. And this is kind of to be inspected, expected, they're very good scores, and this is typically what happens when you do an RFQ first. And then you do an RFP after, we know that the firms that are at this stage can deliver the project because they went through that RFQ status. And I think the 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 low number for BNB Builders doesn't mean they couldn't have done the project, it's just when they came and it was time for them to put pencil to paper. They didn't see as much value to give for the money that we had given them in in the budget, so that's mainly why their their number is lower. And but Alton and Bogart were very, very close in in most of the the categories. The staff report goes into a little bit more in detail about the pros and cons. There were obviously some things that the scoring team liked from the Bogart proposal a little bit more, and there were some things that the team liked from Alton and Nolan Tam, but when you aggregate those all together, it turns out that the Alton Nolan Tam score is higher. And to be honest, either one of these two would have been a great team to move forward with. They both had very, very responsive documents that they submitted, great designs, great value. It's just when you add up all the numbers, one happened to be slightly better than the other, that's how the numbers shook out. There were five scores, and it was also split three to two, three scores had Alton highest and two had Bogart highest, so both the the split of the individual votes and the aggregate overall had Alton, Nolan Tam is number one. So the next steps after the scoring team has produced a result that shows Alton, Nolan Tam is the best, then myself as city engineer, I review that recommendation and make sure that all of the technical items, together with Kitchell, it wasn't just me, look at the proposals and make sure that everything that was in there meets the criteria that we asked for and that they were responsive. And so given that the Alton proposal was responsive to what we requested, and they scored the highest in the team, then it would be my recommendation that we move forward with Alton, and so that's why my recommendation would be that you authorize a city manager to now negotiate that contract with Nolan Tam, and then come back in the new year and finalize the final dollars for that contract, and one of the reasons why we're not just asking you to award tonight is because we did it as design-build. And part of the package that was submitted by Nolan Tam had their take on what a design of the building would be for the purposes of submitting a proposal, it's not necessarily what the building is going to end up being like. Through this process, the city actually does own all three of the proposals that were submitted, so as I mentioned before, there may have been some components of the Bogart and Jason submitted that we really liked, so the negotiating the contract part is gonna be working with Alton to figure out which pieces of their proposal and which pieces of maybe some other things we can throw in and see if that adjusts that best value price that we listed and arrive at a final contract number, and then bring that back to you to actually award it once we have the the actual final project better defined. The rest here with the red dates, this is taken from Alton's proposal, they had to give us a schedule to tell us what they were gonna do for the next two years, so if everything goes according to plan, they would start designing in February. And then we would have design reviews, so this is where we would go to the planning commission with the project plans and show what the design for the proposed building would be, work through that process, submit for building permits, and then break ground probably October of next year. And then it's roughly about 12 months of construction from that point until when we do the commissioning, which is when we test all of the systems in the building and then ultimately open it to the public, so. This gives us a little leeway between when the grant money has to be expended, and this is well, Alton proposed this, but we did give them the guideline that the project needed to be completed by the end of next calendar year, so. So I just want to go over the, because this is not a traditional design bid build where I would usually come to you and say we got five bids and from A, B, C, D, and E, and contractor A was the lowest, and so per the public contract code, you have to award a contract to the low bidder, and we move forward. This process, design-build, is also governed by the public contract code, and so in the code, it states how you have to score and award the design-build contracts, and so we followed the public contract code by stating in the RFP to each of the teams how we were going to score those, and then we had a scoring team evaluate, and we came up with a proposed top score through that process. And so that included all of those items that were on there, it was not just the design that we looked at, it was not just the team, there were many factors, including a lifecycle cost analysis of the building, and then their safety record, these are all things that are listed in the public contract code that we have to look at before we can award a contract to a design-build entity. And then I just want to stress again that part of their proposal was a design, but in authorizing the city manager to move forward with Nolan Tam, you're not endorsing the design that was in their response. You're simply acknowledging that their proposal overall was the best value. And then as we move into the design phase, we'll be able to take bits and pieces of some of the other designs and some of the things we haven't thought of yet, and some things that come out of that collaborative process that Kitchell and and staff are gonna have with a design entity moving forward over the first six months of of next year. And so you're not selecting the design, I've included it later on because I'm sure folks want to know what the Nolan Tam design looked like. So it was part of their proposal, but it's important to note that we're actually selecting the team tonight, not not the design. And so these are just some libraries, part of the reason that Nolan Tam and Alton made it through the RFQ process as one of the top three teams was they have an extensive list of libraries. Excuse me, we asked for five libraries, project profiles when we did the RFQ, they gave us the five, but they also gave us a whole page full of other libraries. They've done over 50 libraries in their portfolio, Nolan Tam have. So they definitely have the experience to do a library, and it's not just they've done big libraries, they've done small libraries, they've done all kinds of libraries. Alton too has done a number of libraries, and one of the other things that we look at is not just libraries, but design-build history too, so both Noel and Tam and Alton have extensive design-build history where they've gone through this process before. So these are some of their examples, probably the closest one is the Belvedore, Belvedere Tiburon Library Expansion, which was an Alton project. And then Capitola Library, Half Moon Bay, like I said, their their RFQ, their statement of qualifications for the RFQ and their proposal are both attached to the staff report and are available online if anybody wants to look further at the documents that they submitted. And then we'll get into part of the design that they proposed. All three teams in the RFP process did submit their design that was responsive, their kind of first take in responding to the criteria document that we have. And so there were things in there that we liked and things in there that we're probably gonna have to tweak or change. And so I'll share these, but it's important to note that these are concept plans that the Nolan Tam and Alton team put together to be responsive to the RFP. And so this is the site plan roughly north straight up. And so you have Doorty at the top and then Orchid at the bottom, and then on the left is Rose Lane. The common point for all three of the proposals we received was we told them that we want the access to the building to be off Rose Lane, not off Doorty. So you see a driveway coming in off Rose Lane, and then the parking is towards the back of Orchid, which was also stated as probably the most desirable layout, and then they have the building up front near Doorty. And then the rest of the site is landscaped, we did say we want a lot of native landscaping, biodiversity in the design, and so that's what they've presented here. And then the next is, the top one is kind of their perspective view of the outside of the building, this is looking from Orchid back towards the building. Lot of natural materials, wood, and then some windows for natural light into the building at either end. And then they also provided a cutaway, which is the drawing at the bottom that kind of shows their vision for how the building would be. The interior spaces would be oriented, and so one of the great features that we liked about Nolan Tam's presentation and and their design was that they oriented the library and the community space in such a way that there was some flexibility in use there. So that if we have an event in the library and it needs to spill over, there's an easy connectivity to the community space. I'd say they they found a really good way to demonstrate that in their site layout. And another strong point of the of their presentation was the level of finishes in the interior and the interior layout of the library, they scored very strong points for the interior architecture. And then I'll touch on the the funding, I mentioned the 12.7 million that we provided them as our budget, the stipulated sum for this project. That's your first column of dollar figures, you see here, it's it's adjusted up slightly because I've added in that alternate bid item that we asked for for the additional 450 square feet of community space, so. The 13.1 million at the bottom reflects Alton's proposal for that additional space is 387,000. Your next column is the funding that you've already approved, so through previous actions, you did approve a budget for the new library for the spending the Commons Foundation funds and the grants. And so for this portion of the construction, that's about 8.6. So we're short about $230,000 in what you've programmed so far, and that's mainly because we programmed the 5.2 something state grant, but we only programmed the 5 million of the Commons Foundation, so there's another 200,000 in in match money that needs to be programmed. The rest of these projects that are in the proposal have not been incorporated into the budget yet, so these are the things we'll come back to you in in January with with options for funding these pieces of the project, and so the community space was the 1.8 million dollar number. And then again, Alton's bid for increasing that to about 2,000 square feet. And then again, um Alton's bid for increasing that to about two thousand square feet was another three hundred. And eighty seven thousand, uh, one point six for site work. Uh, that's your um access driveway in, once we get off Rose Lane, that's your parking lot. Um, landscaping utilities, we need to bring water, sewer, PG&E um up to the building. Uh, and then the FFNE number, which is again the furniture fixtures um and equipment. Um, and so the number on the right is our shortfall at the moment. Those are the numbers that will be coming back to you uh with proposals of how we could cover some of these gaps. And in total, it's about four point um five million.
Julian, can I, can I ask you a question about that last slide?
Yes.
Um, so uh, this earlier, I, I saw something that said it was about twelve million that we had. We had five million, five point two, and then a million from the state.
Yes.
Um, so part of that, I guess, is going to go towards that four point five, is that right? Because we only have eight point eight in the funding, we should have another close to four. In that, if, if we're going to have the, the numbers we had earlier.
Right, so there's um, I'll try and do the, 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 the math on that. So um, the funding that we have is if you take the um, the five point two and the five, you got ten point two. Um, and then you've got the other million dollars that we got for the targeted grant. That targeted grant, yes, is not included in here. In theory, some of that could go towards that one point six site work number that you see there. Uh, but we've also had conversations about using part of that one million dollars for improving Rose Lane up to the driveway. End of the library and then also for doing the uh satellite parking lot on the right side of Rose. As you drive in, so if you take those improvements out of that million dollars, whatever's left, yes, could go towards this four point five. The remainder of the ten point two um is we're carrying a half a million dollar contingency in all of these numbers. Um, and that's to cushion anything uh that changes between now and when we have a final design. Uh, as I mentioned, we're going to negotiate a contract with Alton. Um, and there may be bits and pieces that we feel are really good uh value adds and we want to add in um to the project. Uh, and there may be other issues that crop up. You don't have the change orders on a design build like you do on a traditional design bid build because your architect and your contractor are working together for day one. But we may get to a point where we say, I really wish we'd have gone with an upgraded window or something like that. And that half a million dollars that's uh not shown in these numbers, that's part of the ten point two is for contingencies to crop up like that. The other piece of the ten point two that you don't see in there is there's money for Kitchell's contract and there's money for um staff time. And so you take the, the ten point two uh and you subtract the half a million for contingencies, you're down to nine point seven. And then Kitchell's contract is seven hundred thousand and then staff time, there's three hundred thousand allocated for that. So that's how the ten point two turns to the eight point eight that you see there. Yep. So that was the end of the presentation, uh, I'm available for any questions. Um, and as I mentioned, Ignacio from uh Kitchell is also here. If you have any questions with uh the process that we've been through or the process that we're about to go through.
Uh, let's start with staff, does staff have any, uh, sorry, for council, does council have questions for staff?
Sure. Well, I think I echo uh city manager Dan Schwartz saying this is a fabulous day to get to this point. Um, this is uh been a long time coming and it's had a lot of stops and starts. As a project that I've been involved in since I was first elected. Um, we worked on this project for, many people have worked on this project for many years, including some who are here in our audience tonight. Who've been part of the Larkspur uh Library Foundation and um uh the Larkspur, the Commons Foundation. Um, we've had this project move forward, step back, move forward, step back. We lost our wonderful Frances Gordon, our librarian of many, many years. Um, and that created a um, a change in the project. We had some turnover of staff uh in particularly important roles like Mr. Skinner's role, we've um, he's been here now. And we've also had um some budgetary issues with COVID hitting all of us and. Uh, cha- changing the direction of where we were going, but I think this points to the tenacity of our community. Because uh, and our staff to not just table this like some communities have done and put it on a binder for forty years. We're, we're, we've a few years, but we're still in process. And I don't think this would have come to where it is right now without the community. And without the library, um, the Commons Foundation, the library, the, the Larkspur Library Foundation and the Friends of the Library. Coming together and really working hard to um take this to be an example of a public-private partnership. And I want to give kudos to Joe Jennings, who is uh, was really instrumental in starting the private fundraising for this. Uh, really took the initiative, I know it was tough, I know he had to face a, a lot of challenges for um. Uh, his tenacity in this has been well rewarded. Uh, when he moved to Seattle, he didn't stop. Uh, promoting the library and promoting how wonderful Larkspur was. Um, and he spent a lot of time still um na- navigating the community and really speaking proudly for what Larkspur could have. And I give kudos to Joe, I hope you're watching. And when Joe moved and we needed new leadership, we uh, I. Thought the best person to return to Larkspur after some years of travel would be our ex-council member, Ann Morrison. And now she has, she has stepped up to the plate as um. Taken over the leadership position along with a lot of other people in our audience here tonight to continue to fundraise. Because as you saw, our funding structure is very detailed. But it's also um, it, it creates the library and the community space is what the finances that we have. So we'll continue, they will continue to reach out to the community and we want to make this the best possible place for the next fifty years. So I'm thrilled to see this, I'm glad we've gotten this far. And we still have a lot of time to do um, to get this to work, but we're all behind, I'm all behind it and I hope my colleagues are too. That was a speech rather than a question.
Perfect, thank you, uh, are there uh comments or questions from council?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go briefly, um, you know, first I, I wanted to thank uh Julian and Ignacio both. So um Mayor Candell and I were uh observers on the process. And I have to say it was really well organized and uh just, just, you know, getting through the criteria, kind of finding the best. Um, you know, of, of the bidders and, and uh. Um, you know, keeping, there were some very, very long meetings and a lot of technical detail. And then also to thank Ann Morrison and Brock Wagstaff, who were the other two who are really working on this. And of course, Joe Jennings for funding. Um, I did have one small question, I, I think the point was really important. That this, what we see tonight is not the design, it's really that we're selecting. You know, it's almost like we've asked them to show their ability in some creative exercise and it might be something different. And I'm getting public comment from some people who may or may not like it, they need to understand we haven't finalized the design. The question is, um, what is your sense of, of how much what they propose might change? And, and for what reason? I know that's very speculative, but I just wanted to get a sense for how the spring might go for the design process.
Mind if I jump in for a sec? So I want to make a quick comment about design. We all need to accept that there's no design that will be universally loved in the community. I think we all have to just, I've learned that through this process. So I'm, I'm, I'm not surprised, but a little disheartened that you're already receiving criticisms before we've unveiled a design. Um, and I encourage folks to look at the Nolan Tam website and just see the types of, the variety of design they do. Um, I feel confident we will get a building that the community will embrace. All the, now I'll answer the question on Julian's behalf because I asked him a similar question. We have a lot of play for design, but you also have to recognize Alton is who you're awarding a contract to. And they built a bid based on some general parameters that are in that design. And if we play with the design too much, we will not fit our budget. So we have to balance that as we go through this, recognizing that half this budget is a very constrained state grant that we're thrilled to have. But we have to work within the parameters of it. So uh, I hit the, hit the mark there, Julian. There will be a design review, it will go to the planning commission, people will be able to applaud it or throw tomatoes at that time.
Thank you. Yes, we will, Carol.
Just um, would it be possible to include? At some point, I realize this may not be the time, but. Uh, assuming the next step where you come back to us with sort of the basic outline. If included in the uh presentation, could be roughly when the public comment period will be. So people have it. Um, in their brain that we are going to have public comment on it at some point. Given all the limitations that we know are gonna, we're gonna be facing.
I would, I'd rather respond in this way. We will make sure that there is a way to sign up to be notified. But I, I really don't want to constrain. Process that is tied to timelines where we could lose millions of dollars.
Yeah.
By telling the public something's going to happen at a particular point. In fact, one of the things that. Julian and I know from years of working on public projects is. That timeline's going to slip or gain traction based on the weather and all sorts of other conditions that are.
Okay, what I would suggest then is to include that advising people to sign up with a planning commission. Uh, notifications. So that they'll be aware of when it's going to be going before the planning commission.
And I, I agree.
That would satisfy it, I'm, what people are asking me is when can I argue in favor of keeping VHA steps as opposed to DPT? I'm, you know. And you know, how many workstations and will there be a senior area, et cetera? So I think just telling them that's going to be the appropriate place and that's.
Well, see, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, yeah, tonight's not the night, but that, that's. Two separate things, programming the building and the design of the building are not the.
For the design of the building at least. Making sure that that's, the public's aware of it and the way to find out about it. Because a lot of the things last night that we heard was people saying, well, I didn't know, I didn't know. And Elise kept saying, the planning commission kept saying, well, sign up for our mailing list and you'll know. And I think that's an important message to get out.
I think that's right, I, I just want to caution us that we've been in this process for a long time and design can um. I would encourage everyone to look at the Nolan Tam Architects website and visit some of their projects. I went and saw the Half Moon Bay project, I saw the Capitola project. Uh, you're going to love the work that they do and you're going to see that it fits with our community. And I think we've learned um, when we had a previous design um project a few years back. That that look and feel didn't fit right, this fits right. And I think we can't get bogged down with. Uh, we're going to lose the money if we get bogged down with too much of the nuances as opposed to seeing the general concept. And their concepts fit this community, that's all I have to say for now, but we'll, but I, I hear you, but um. I want to make sure everybody weighs in, but we're to the point where nobody can weigh in on all of the truly nuanced things else we, we will fail again.
Okay, I was pointing that out as how ridiculous some of the questions are. But one of the common themes we heard last night was how the city. Is shoving this down our throat. Which is not, it's the state, but we have to live with it. And so I think we can avoid a lot of that conversation by urging people to sign up for whichever. Preferably sign up for the Commons Foundation so you can add to their mailing list so they can fundraise. Even if just doing mad is a win-win for both sides. It takes burden off the staff and they can listen to them and then say, oh, by the way, how about sending us twenty bucks? For answering your questions.
All right, other uh council member questions or comments? Uh, I have something quick, although I see, my, my only thing, I, I, two things first is. Um, holy cow, I can't believe this is happening and I am so grateful to the Commons Foundation. But I am even more grateful to the public and for the donors and the people who really stepped up to do this. Because the reality is we have ten million dollars now that we never had. And it wouldn't be hap- we would be having this conversation if not for that, you know, and the, this, the fact that the state had a matching grant. All the money the Commons Foundation raised doubled and that's why we're here. And I, I just want to make sure I, I express my gratitude, I need the gratitude of, of the council. Uh, the question that I did have, and did you want to make a comment before I?
I'm gonna wait till I answer your question, Mr. Mayor, but I do have a few things I'll enter into the record before you.
Okay.
Into public comment.
My, my question is um, that my understanding is we are authorizing staff to negotiate. Uh, with uh one of the parties here. And my question is, if those negotiations hypothetically don't go well. And the other side kind of digs their heels in and we're not happy the way those negotiations are going. Can we authorize you to negotiate with more than one of those groups at this point? Or is there some backup plan? If they say, well, it's going to be an extra two million dollars and, and we think that's unreasonable, but it's something we really want. Can't, is there a way that I can, that we can authorize you to have a plan B to negotiate with the, the other group if necessary?
I'm going to defer to the legal aspect of that question to the public works director. Um, I, I feel pretty comfortable and confident that hypothetical won't happen though.
I mean, I ju- I just feel like I want to, I want to make sure we have some type of leverage that, to say, you, you know what? If you don't want to be reasonable with us, we have another option. As opposed to kind of being like, okay, we're stuck with you, we have to negotiate, but we don't really have a plan B if you're not being reasonable with us. Does that make any sense?
It, it, it does, and I understand the question in theory, but in practicality, it, it won't happen. Um, because the contractor submitted a bid bond. And so if they, they would have to act in bad faith for us not to award them a contract. And then they would be subject to forfeiting uh one point two million dollars, which they're not going to do. Um, so I don't see it happening legally if there's something that happens and we went through a process. Um, we could go to number two, but when I say legally. That's, that's a, that's a long process and that would take time, it's not an easy thing to do. It would really, it would really impact our, our schedule if we had to uh do anything other than go with uh Nolan Tam at the, at this point.
Right, that answers my question, thank you, I'm sorry, I, you had some questions or comments?
That's a good segue to a few things I want to make sure that we add to the record. Um, a lot of what we're negotiating is going to rest around some of these alternative prices that we asked for some additional items. The grant constrained us to propose uh for the like size of what we have now, which. When we did everything counting all behind the house, came out to the sixty eight forty five number um that you saw. Um. Once upon a time, the American Library Association told you that you should build a library that was one square foot per resident. They've actually officially abandoned that and said libraries come in all shapes and sizes and a community needs to figure that out. Nonetheless, the range they say is typical is about point seven five to one point two five. Square feet per resident, sixty eight forty five doesn't get us even into that range. Can we make sixty eight forty five work? We can, but what's missing that we've talked about many times is community meeting spaces and programming space. And what I'm really excited about working on in this negotiation is trying to get the biggest bang for the buck to add that into the project. Um, one of the things I think if I were coming in late to this process and I hadn't heard all the many presentations is that. Um, the council saves within its reserve for the general fund, a portion for capital projects. Uh, we have about five million dollars currently for capital projects. As the council knows, we have something like sixty million dollars in need. So although five million sounds like a lot of money, we have a lot of needs. That said, I think two things that guide us in using capital money that's in the reserve is opportunity. Uh, and priorities. Our number one priority, as you all know, is the storm drains, but we've worked really hard. And we got the support of the community to, to find some sources to get our storm drain program moving. And we actually have a few years of funding lined up for projects for the Storm Drain Master Plan. So I feel very comfortable that when we come to award the project. So I feel very comfortable that when we come to award the project, that if we are able to have a successful negotiation, I can recommend to you that a portion of the general fund reserve that's set aside for capital, go to this other thing, which is opportunity. This is a tremendous opportunity. It's a, it's a once in a generation opportunity. And so um, I'll be working with Mr. Skinner and we'll be negotiating with Alton to try to deliver to the community that extra space. And that actually then gets the library into sort of that sweet spot that the American Library Association talks about. Um, and I think just as we all know, the meeting that Mr. Cal is referring to last night, Councilmember Cal's referring to, it was crowded in here. It's too crowded. And that actually took the temperature of the meeting up a notch. We need spaces for the community to meet for important issues and for fun and for programming. And that's something I'd really like to see a Legacyist project. We'll be working really hard during the negotiation to make that happen. And then lastly, before I turn to you, Mr. Mayor, I also wanna remind folks who may be going, well, can't we slow this down a little bit? Can't we talk about this a little more? The first million dollars has a due date of, of June 30. If we don't spend it by June 30, we lose it. And we actually already got extensions to get it to June 30 cause we knew we couldn't hit the original due date. So we gotta get going. And that's one of the big reasons we brought that, this to you tonight.
Okay. Thank you so much for that. Uh, at this point, let me open it up to the public. Anyone from the public like to make a comment on this? Come on up.
Uh, Jean Friedel, Larkspur Commons Foundation.
Kathy Green, Commons Foundation.
Um, we just wanna quickly say a couple of things. And first, congratulations, Mayor Candell. Uh, we look forward to working with you and all of council on this project, as well as with City Manager and Julian as we continue this journey. Just quickly, 2015, Joe Jennings had a, a vision to resurrect a dream that was this library. Um, and tonight is the beginning of the reality. Uh, so thank you to Joe Jennings. I know you're out there looking at us from Seattle. So thank you for that. Um, and our current board president, Ann Morrison, looking at us from the other side of the globe. So thank you for paying attention to us tonight as well. Big thanks to Dan and Julian and Damon who came in. I saw our new library director for continuing to meet with us um, on ongoing basis as we move this process along. It wouldn't be where it was if we didn't have those meetings and that uh, back and forth communication, I'll say. Uh, to remind us, Mr. Mayor Candell said, thank you to all the donors, all the library organizations that helped participate in this. Again, every, there's lots of people where you can say, we wouldn't be here without them. And that list is long and varied. What do you wanna add?
Okay. Sorry. I just wanted to add that um, a special thanks to the city. And I know we are the city. But for giving the Commons Foundation the ability to go out and meet with people. And there was a um, a point where people didn't have a tremendous amount of confidence that this was gonna work, both people in the city, both people who live here. And by starting and by believing in us and giving us the seed money to start this, we were then able to start talking to people, going into people's homes. The outreach was pretty phenomenal. Um, and we just decided this is just gonna happen. We have to make this happen and we're gonna do it now. There's no reason to wait. And it all came together, but it had to do with daily support from not only the people who are interested, donors, the people who live here. You are us. We are all people who work for this city and we're making this project happen. And I think we all deserve a really huge uh, a, a moment to just appreciate this. Yeah, I mean, to really appreciate where we are right now. This is amazing. And thank you all very, very much.
And just finally, a quick reminder that we'll be honoring and thanking our donors on Friday, December 22nd at 5:30, where we're gonna give it another shot to turn the lights on again in Piper Park, even though they've been on. But the night we let them for the first time, it was pouring rain. Um, so uh, thank you to Director Nick Stone, who's allowing us a second chance at bat and hopefully it won't rain that night. So have all, everyone come out and join us. And please, council, come out and join us and, cause we wouldn't be doing it without you again. Another group that we wouldn't be here without you. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Jean, Diligence City Manager, one comment?
Of course.
I'm pleased to hear Joe Jennings is uh, listening. And Kathy, uh, Jean and Joe met with us a lot since 2015. And you know, you can still teach an old dog new tricks sometimes. And I was going about our business and I was doing everything and they'd come in and they'd say, if you could just say it this way, you'd be amazed how much better things will go. Um, and I'd look at them kinda confused and perplexed. And then Joe would call me again and he'd say, no, I really mean it. You need to say this. I mean, you say it this way. Um, and then I would do it and then they would tell me they had raised more money. So um, I learned a lot about speaking to the community through the Commons Foundation. I wanna thank all of them for that.
Thank you. Okay, more uh, comments from the public on this agenda item. Come on up.
Uh, James Holmes, congratulate, Larkspur congratulates, congratulating everybody. I would like, for the record, to remind the council that apropos of design, these are the documents that were widely circulated to show the conceptual design as part of the fundraising process. And uh, if you look very closely, and I think there's still some of those documents down in the library. You look very closely, they say all concept drawings are for fundraising and public engagement purposes only. Nevertheless, this is what was out there. And the background of that is that the original proposal back in 2015 or thereabouts was a very angular industrial modern proposal and it was roundly panned by the citizens. And as a result of that, the city undertook what they call a um, a, a community character uh, process. And they put out this uh, piece of literature and they had three uh, meetings. And uh, they solicited a lot of comments about what was community character and how the building should connect with community character. And uh, this was in a sense, the result of that. Part of the process, as some of us said, you know, you really have to have renderings. If you're going to do fundraising, you have to have some sort of renderings that people can look at. That's what Sandra Felt did with their firehouse. And uh, this was the uh, this was the result of those, uh, the idea of a rendering. The bottom line here is that there was a consensus, I believe, that the uh, library design should be of a traditional character. And uh, I think that continues to be the uh, out, uh, the outset of this, uh, the upshot. And uh, I would hope that the materials relating to the citizens' views of community character that were generated as a result of this would be, if not already, made available uh, to the uh, bidders. And uh, I would hope that uh, people would, would remember that uh, this kind of traditional design is what uh, what, what we had in mind and uh, would uh, govern the design process as it goes along. Because we certainly would not want people to think that there was any kind of uh, of a bait and switch process. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Mr. Holmes, I, I went to all three of those community meetings uh, where we did the look and feel and I remember them well. So believe me, I will guard that knowledge.
Thank you. And if anyone would like copies of these, I can certainly provide.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there additional public comment? Come on up.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And again, to the Vice Mayor, Larry Longto, 47 Meadowwood. Uh, I followed this subject for quite a while, as you know. And um, I got a big packet of 300 pages, as I mentioned, to the Vice Mayor um, before the meeting began. And I made my way through it as best I can. Before I get to that, I thought I'd say that uh, one comment I heard here was that uh, there was a 5.2 million uh, grant, uh, 5.2 million raised by the Commons Foundation and a grant of 5.2 million. So we got 10.2 million. No, 5.2 doubled as 10.4. It is another couple hundred thousand dollars, but that's, I just, I digress. Anyway, what I'd like to talk about basically is that um, a couple of things. Uh, number one, the staff report and the square footage, which I know is dictated by the grant from the state at 6845. The proposal for the additional common space, which I took to be the 1655, not the 2100 that I'm hearing because there's another 400 square feet. So the math I did here that I'm gonna give you is a little off by 400 square feet, but that's okay. So if you add together 6845 and 1655, you get 8,500 square feet. Generally, uh, I think most of the library studies, like the one that was done by Page and Morris, says that there's sort of a 75% efficiency factor in libraries. And that efficiency means the library functionality as a percentage of the whole building. So what, what in common sense or common terms, what that really means is that when you're trying to figure out library efficiency and what you get for a library, you don't count storage space. You don't count H A V C and um, corridors and that sort of thing. So those get excluded. So that 75% factor, if it's multiplied, and I think that's, I, I think that's embedded actually in the the architects' numbers that were presented in the pages in the report you've got. But um, if you apply 75% to the total of 6845 and to 6845, you multiply that by 75%, you get 5133. And the point I'd make about that is the library downstairs has 4,000 square feet. So 5,100 and, and square feet is only like a or, you know, it's, it's not much more than what you have downstairs. I, I wanna keep that in mind. And then I'll get to the next part about the library. Um, but before I do, I wanted to say that as far as community meeting space is concerned, the original Page and Morris report, which I've given you, and I didn't have time to copy this, but at the very back, um, Kathy Page has an appendix with what she calls seating needs, which is basically, uh, she's, has various subtotals of space. So teen space, space for children, adult seating space. And then um, all of this is ended up in a general total of group study conference room. So it's basically about conference rooms. And there are two numbers. There's a total of 1591 and 1891. If you add those together, you're up around little over 3,000 square feet. Why do I say that? I say that because if you compare that to what you're thinking about adding to the 6845, you don't really have what Larkspur needs if it's gonna have a larger library uh, than the 6845. So again, you can get that out of, out of pay. If you want me to, I'll, I'll send it to you. I just did not have time to copy that. Um, and I'm, I'm gonna come back to that a little bit. The next thing I wanna say um, is that at the very beginning of the process, uh, Joe Jennings made it clear that he felt that he could not raise $20 million to build a library of 10,000 square feet. So he wanted to do it in two phases. And the phases were each of 5,000 square feet. And I, I made copies of this. I don't want you to rely on just what I'm saying, but I went back and I looked at what I had and um, and I have copies for each of you. If you don't mind, I can hand them to you. Um, and then I can explain.
And so just for future, uh, is there a process to, we handed to the clerk or something like that? What's, how's that supposed to?
Our very professional clerk that I keep promising is coming back in January would have left up and intercepted Mr. Langto so that he did not approach the council. Yes.
Just, just, so, so moving forward, the process is to hand it to the clerk. The clerk brings it up, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. So I'll hand that, there are two handles. So I should have. There's a meeting that, that, that occurred in July of 2020. And basically, the purpose of attaching, of giving you that attachment is to show that the Commons Foundation made a presentation. And it's a very thick set of documents. And there is a um, there's a page in there, uh, page 11, can't swear that that's page 11 of the total documents. It says um, uh, Phase Two Capital Campaign Library Community Center, building 5,000 to 10,000 square feet. So that's the reason I gave it to you. This is at the very beginning of the process. Um, the second thing I gave you is that, is a press release. And as you'll recall, the Larkspur Library Foundation had a matching grant of $100,000. So we would match $100,000 to money raised by the Commons Foundation. And they did raise that. So we got 200,000. And that was then, we got that done in time so that when the grant went in, we knew that that money would then be doubled again by the state. Okay? So when that was, before the money was being raised and we matched it, the Commons Foundation released a um, had a press release. And that's the second document I've given you. I've given you an email. It was uh, Joe Jennings to me saying, here's the news release. It's gone out to the media and will be on our website. The relevant part of this, again, gets back to what the library was gonna be square footage wise. And to figure that out, you go to page two. It says about the Commons Foundation.
And Larry, I'm sorry, just wanna let you know, uh, we normally do public comment for, for three minutes. I mean, I don't have the timer going. We're, we're over, but just.
All right.
I don't, I'm gonna cut you off, but, but just.
Okay. I didn't have time to mail this to you. I barely got through it on Sunday, you know?
Okay.
So I, I, I'll be short. The point is, and you have the documents to see, that there was gonna be a 10,000 square foot library. My, my point is that I would not be building community spaces yet until you do the second phase and you can have a completely integrated second phase with the appropriate library functionality and the community space. That's, that's what I would, I'd suggest that you do is just stick to the 5,000 square feet that you're doing now. Now, I know it's a little more 6845 driven by the state. And that's okay. We can, and you could worry later whether it's five or, you know, some, some other number, but uh, I'll, I'll just end by saying that that's what I would recommend that you do. Not use the money for community spaces. And uh, the one thing I would also, community rooms, I'd, I, I would do that later when you do the second phase. I would also reinforce the quality aspects which you reinforced, um, Catherine about, you know, we, we're aware of making this look good. And I, and I think the great thing about the architects that are picked is that they did Belvedere Tiburon. And there's no one that would, that would uh, say anything other than high praise for the quality of that. And I looked at that versus Capitol and I thought, you know, you gotta push them in the direction of Belvedere Tiburon to get the, the nice feel outside. So that, those are my comments. I just wanna remind you of what, what was promised. And you know, a promise made.
Hey, Larry, I, I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm gonna have to cut you off. And if you wanna send us an email or something like that, okay?
Promise made is a promise to be performed. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other uh, public comments? Okay.
Would like to um, move 8.2.
Second.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on to 8.3, 8.3 naming policy for the facilities and features of the Commons, including the new library, the new Larkspur Library. Uh, is there a staff report for that?
Yes, in the course, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the course of our conversations with the Commons Foundation, uh, one of the things that they've talked about is the potential, um, some donors have expressed interest and hope that uh, there'd be recognition for the contributions that they've made. And the Commons Foundation mission is not over. They're still trying to raise money to further enhance the Commons. And so the potential to be able to, to talk to donors about potential naming rights uh, is of great value to them. And your ad hoc committee, which is Mayor Candell and Councilmember Paulson agreed with that. Uh, so staff was given direction to work on a policy. This policy is specific to this building and it's specific to the larger things like spaces, like rooms and, and uh, big features. Uh, one thing we've told the Commons Foundation is we will probably take our existing practices and policies around uh, naming a bench or naming a table. We already have a program for that sort of thing. And we'll extend that to the library so that if folks wanna make of a, a contribution there. so that if folks want to make a, a contribution there and potentially have a plaque on a piece of furniture, that's something we'll do with the city at a later date. We'll bring that forward. This, this is for the bigger ticket type of arrangement. And I was actually surprised working on this policy with City Attorney's Office. Not a lot of great examples out there, uh, because everybody sort of does it differently. And I want to thank the City Attorney's Office for sort of finding one that we could take and crap down to this specific project. So we're asking that you approve this, which would give uh, your ad hoc committee and staff uh, the opportunity to work with the Commons Foundation to figure out what naming assignments might look like. As the policy shows, um, each donor that would be offered that opportunity for recognition or each contributor would need to enter into an agreement with the city and there's some parameters around that. And part of that is to just protect the city and retain options should there be need to revisit decisions that were made in the past.
Thank you for that staff report. Uh, going to the council, do we have any questions for staff?
I, I think this is important, uh, I, uh, to move forward because there are people who are interested in having a family legacy naming opportunity or some other opportunity. Um, and I, I'm glad we've come to this point within the um fundraising process that we've had some extraordinary donations by members of our community without even having the need to have a recognition. They gave because they're committed to the project. Um, and I, I applaud them because uh, they are very committed to the quality of this community. And so it didn't matter if there was a naming opportunity for them. But now there is a potential that we could reach out to other members of the broader community who might find it to be a valuable thing. So I think it's an important thing for us to move forward with and I feel confident that we are not going to have O dot co library or some strange like baseball park named library. Pack Bell Library. Although Pack Bell, if you want to give us some money, you can. And I don't even know what O dot co does, so.
All right, are there other comments or questions from council? Nope. Okay, opening up to the public, any comments, questions uh, from the public? Seeing none, closing public comment. Um, do I have a motion from?
I'll move eight point three, please.
Whoa, was that a second? Okay, can we get a, a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, and uh, with that, I believe that was our last agenda item. So with that, our meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting is set for, I believe we said January seventeenth.
Actually, your next meeting is for right now.
All right. So we just closed that meeting and now let's start another one. Uh, well, this is going to be probably a one minute meeting, I would imagine, right?
Um, yeah, just for the benefit of the public, uh, we had some agenda items that we wanted to add, but due to the constraints of the Brown Act, we needed to essentially notice a second or announce a second meeting so that we could get these in front of you. Um, and it's entirely because we're trying to meet a deadline at the end of the calendar year to make some investments. You're, you're just approving, conforming the investment policy of the city to the state's parameters.
Okay, so uh, just to make the records clear, we are closing the first meeting. Well, I could have gavel that actually. We are opening the second meeting. Okay, uh, uh, do we need a roll call for the second meeting?
Uh, you could dispense with it and have the clerk acknowledge that the rule of the first meeting.
I will do exactly that. Okay, and then
I would like to point out that even in Mr. Paulson's tenure, we never had three meetings in one night. So I'm a little worried about this next year.
Okay, so uh, it says public comment. Is there anybody, a public comment that hasn't commented already? Seeing none, closing public comment. Presentations, proclamations, we have none. Next item is a, approval of the consent calendar. Uh, do we have any uh, comments on the, uh, day us here to pull an item from the consent calendar? Would anybody in the public like to pull a item off the consent calendar for discussion? Okay, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Uh, some moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Can we get a roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. As there are no public hearings, no business items, this third meeting is now adjourned. And with that, uh, our next meeting is now January
January seventeen.
Seventeenth.
I encourage folks to go to our website. There's about eight different ways you can receive information from the city. Sign up for one or all of them, but uh, we do push out a lot of information and encourage folks to monitor it.
Happy holidays, everybody. Uh, be safe and uh, see you next year.